Thank you for joining us this evening. We're in a special meeting at the Park City City Council at 6:00 PM. Danielle, would you call the roll?
Here.
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 All right. Thank you. John?
Well, I guess, just to find a starting point where we're going to start at, I guess, did you have a plan to start somewhere?
No. The only thing I was going to ask is just Danielle, if you'd just kind of point out kind of the situation that we're in with our budget and the necessity of a budget.
Where we left off at the last workshop was we had a proposed budget with a 3.4 mil increase. That 3.4 mil increase along with the added expenditures of, just off the top of my head, increased contractual services and some new positions, a 3% wage increase, a 15% budgeted health insurance increase. Those, in addition to the revenues that we're getting, would get us to, excuse me, about $615,000 at year-end. If we do not do a mil increase, per council member, Brandy Bailey requested a projection, a five-year projection of if everything stays the same and we approve this budget and we don't do a mil increase, when would we run out of cash? And I think we projected 2020, 19 or 20, very quickly if we do not do anything. So as the fiscal steward of this city, I would recommend you do something, either make some cuts or adopt some sort of mil levy.
And then you also contacted the state just to kind of get an updated timeline on our budget.
Yes, I did contact the state. The statute is advisory and we have until the 25th to file our budget. If we are unable to, I need to have a conversation with the county clerk and let them know we need more time. The county clerk needs to get out tax notices, so they are flexible, but if we do take more time than they see fit, they will need to issue tax notices and they will issue them with or without our budget. So we could ask for more time if necessary, but they advise that we stick to the 25th date.
And if we do not approve a budget and the county prints those off, we're pretty much closed for 2019.
Yeah, yes, we do.
I guess as a starting point, just to see where we're at, I feel like air's clear a little bit. We've all slept since the last meeting, probably got our heads on straight. Just to give us a starting point, tonight, I would make a motion that we adopt the budget as it was presented last week and invite any discussion about it.
Brandy, did you want a second for discussion?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay.
Like Danielle said, if we don't do anything, we'll be insolvent at the end of 2020, going into 2021. If we don't pass a budget, there's a potential then that we don't, our doors won't be open January 1st and we'll be closed the entire year. Last council meeting, all that was said was that all we do is spend, spend, spend. I've looked at this budget line by line by line and really honestly, we're not spend, spend, spending. The budget for the last five years has been basically the same numbers. The only thing that I found in this that is going up is the increase in personnel, which is due to us doing that evaluation and making sure our employees get paid, increasing utilities and increasing in technology. Our problem isn't our spending, our problem is our revenue coming in. We need to figure out a revenue stream. And if we don't raise the mil levy, then if, I know some people have thought about 2.44%, if we do 2.44%, that only buys us about another year. There hasn't been really a mil levy increase that the council has done since 2014, I believe it was. I know there was the one mil last year, but that was because of the tax lid. So we really haven't done a true increase in quite some time. So I feel like, the more I look at this, I feel like it's time that we do do a mil levy increase. And if not, if we do a lower mil levy, we're going to be in the same situation next year and we're going to have to do a mil levy increase next year. We have out there the city sidewalks, that planning. I know that's gotten a lot of the community involved and a lot of people in the community are excited about that. But if we don't do anything and we don't pass this, then that recommendation's going to come in, we ain't going to be able to fund that sidewalk. And then we're going to look, we're going to, I mean, the people that are excited are getting involved in the community there. I mean, we've pretty much said, okay, oops, sorry, we're not going to do this. We did all this evaluation, now we're not going to put in some sidewalks. For the code enforcement, hiring this position, I know this is, this was an issue I kind of had with, but Tom, Tom mentioned last meeting that, you know, maybe we split this position, maybe make it half code enforcement, half building inspector. But us passing this budget with this dollar amount for a code enforcement officer isn't us hiring the code enforcement officer. It's just putting the budget together. That way, if we do decide that's the route we want to take, the funds are available to us. If the council comes back and says, no, we don't want to hire, then that's just the extra $138 that's added back into the balance at the end of the year. And then like Danielle said, if we don't pass the budget, the county will send our numbers to the state and the doors will be closed at 2019, so.
Brandy, do you want to go over the three scenarios that we have?
So I asked Danielle to put together some scenarios for me. The first scenario was if we do nothing and that puts us, that means no mil levy increase, no code enforcement officer, we become insolvent at the end of 2020. I asked for a mil levy increase of 2.44 mils and no code enforcement officer. That puts us insolvent sometime in 2023. And then if we did the 3.44 plus a code enforcement officer, then we become insolvent at the end of 2020, or yeah, end of '22, '22 going into '23. So really, whether we do a 3.44 mils and no code, or 3.44 mils and a code and 2.44 mils and no code, we're in the same situation. The number's pretty close.
Yeah, I mean, just to coat tell a little bit of what you said, it's reckless to say all we do is spend, spend, spend because we don't. And if you look at the numbers, it shows that. You know, if we want to start cutting expenses, we can start talking about how many rolls of toilet paper that we're currently purchasing because that's about where we're at in the budget with getting it done. If it wasn't that way, you couldn't go from 2014 until today with an imploded budget of discretionary spending and not doing mil levy increases. I think we have to do the entire 3.44 increase because if we don't, instead of punting the football, we're only kicking the can down the street a little bit. And we need to try to punt the football as soon as we can. I think if you start looking at what the state has done to us, I think you're going to find more cities that are taking that mil levy increase max that they're allowed every year because you don't know what the next year holds for you. If we decide we wanted to do 1.5 mil increase and then next year our evaluations went down, we didn't gain any ground. And then you can't do an increase. So, I mean, I'd agree with that. And when you do budget forecasting and you forecast out, it really tells a story of where we're at. Is that all you had, Brandy?
Well, and like, I just want to reiterate, you know, I was, I know last meeting I voted no and I was for no because I'm, you know, but the more I look at this and I look at our numbers, we're really not spending. Our issue is our revenue, it's not our expenses.
Okay. Tom?
Well, I was going to say, you're talking about revenue. We've been living off the business evaluations and growth from things that happened 10 years ago that are coming off of tax abatements and stuff, and that's been our growth and I look at, like Brandy said, we're looking at sidewalks, we're looking at drainage, we're looking at streets and what we want to do with those, and we aren't doing anything to fund them. We haven't done anything in the last five years to do any growth funding there. We've got some employee scenarios coming up where we're going to have to replace some employees. We also, by replacing them, probably will have to hire some new people to do statement of work that the people that are leaving are doing. So there's some potential impacts there. I don't like the idea of raising the mil levy, but I don't think we're going to get anything done if we don't. And some of the other areas that we keep looking at that have nice amenities have sales taxes. And that's been a big no here. I mean, people frown upon sales tax. So the only vehicle we got to pull that back in is through the mil levy. There's things we can do. If we pass this, we can scrutinize the budget through the year and look at how we spend that money and try to retain it and do the right things with it. I think we need to quit becoming, I mean, I look at a lot of things we do that we do that are niceties in the community that end up being something 501(c)(3) ought to be doing and not a tax base. So we've got some issues we could look at internally, but I think we need to do this just to make it right for the city, make things right in the future.
And just come back with a little bit of what you said. I mean, in order for us to grow, we have positions we need to grow in and personnel. And that includes, we need to hire a city engineer. We need to do, we need to do some of those engineering things on our own. And if we, if we take a step backwards and we want to start cutting things, and I have some cuts that we could do, of which I will say none are good for the city, zero are good for the city. Because I think we have a well-budget that's been well-thought-out, that department heads have turned in, that consistently they don't spend, spend, spend. They do what they need to do to run their departments as efficiently as they can. But we need a city engineer. And one of those reasons why is because we have to outsource some of that, Jack cuts a lot of it in there. But when we talk about inspecting our streets and sewer and water, if we have an employee that works for us, we're going to get a better inspection than what we will out of doing a third party and having somebody come out that may just drive by, sign a sheet and leave and never even get out of their truck and look at something. But we have to grow as a community to make those things happen. George?
You know, the last meeting, I came awful close to voting yes and then fighting with the administration later. But my big problem was with, I felt like code enforcement, yeah, I think we could do that. But my feelings was we need, we need help in the streets more. I'll give you a prime example. Over the weekend, I was just walking down 61st Street, which I do every day. I walk down by subway and down to my sister's house, I have coffee. But I noticed on the marquee, here's this sign, remember the Safe Water Act, please keep your clippings out of the street. Well, and I'm looking down at the street, and our city streets got clippings in them. And I'm thinking, we can't have this. And it's nobody's fault. It's because, if it's anybody's fault, it's ours because we are not furnishing streets enough manpower to get their job done. It's our fault. And I accept that, that the reason it's not happening is because we don't have the manpower to do it. And I felt like, I wished, I wished God I'd have just voted yes and then come back and argued, argued later for my point of view, but I didn't. So that's water under the bridge. I know we have to have a budget and I know we have to have increases, that much is a given. So, but that's, that's my strong feelings on it. I believe that the streets need help. I know for, for years, we used to hire temporary people during the summer to take hot oil and fill the cracks. And we don't do that anymore. And it shows. And that's where I'm coming from. I'm, I'm infrastructure-type person and I believe we need to keep our infrastructure up and somehow I feel like we just don't have the manpower to do it. It's no one's fault. It's no one's fault. It's just we don't have the manpower. And that's, that's kind of the way I am. I'll probably be a yes on this, on this vote. Thank you.
Ben?
I think, yeah, when it comes to the mil levy increase, it's something that we've got to do just based upon our increased expenditures. It's an inflation issue. I think what, the one part that I get to and we talk about insolvency, if we don't do a mil levy increase, I would have been interested to see a fourth scenario if we did the mil levy at 3.44 and did not allocate for a code enforcement officer there. It's not to say that at time we don't, we might not need one, but at a time when we've seen, if you look over the past four or five years, the general fund reserve going down each year, and we're talking about the issue of how, how much farther we can go without doing a mil levy increase, yet we want to increase a new position to bring that, that amount lower, I think it'd be wiser to hold off on 2019 adding a code enforcement officer and waiting till 2020 to see where we're at at that point, rather than dropping it down to 616,000 from when we're starting out with 711,000. So that would be my contention. There is just simply, when we're, when we're already dwindling down our reserves and then getting to the scenarios of insolvency, why not look and see what it would do if we did not do a code enforcement officer in 2019, put that money back into the general fund reserve and see where we would end up versus where we're at now.
So just hanging on that one for a minute too. Most of the council's been here for a while and I've hollered out this a couple of times that we should have took increases when we had the opportunity that were smaller than this one. And the council failed to react to that. And that's what's put us in the situation today, is, you know, and I, I think you're going to see this in communities all over, is because of the handcuffs that we're on by the state, you know, like this year, we could probably do like a two mil increase and get away with it. But next year, you might have to do something else, but we don't know what the next year holds, thank you, the state of Kansas. People want more services in the community and not less. I mean, if you look at probably why people are leaving the state of Kansas, because we're not doing things, infrastructure's a big one. And, you know, I was looking at a, at a survey through the flag branding and looking at the positive, negative comments in there, and the top two issues in there were appearance and streets. I thought that was interesting out of, out of the survey. Those were two things that were up at, up at the top of that list. Tom?
Well, I was going to say, I think code enforcement's ended up being a kind of what appears to be a low-hanging fruit. And, you know, if we go after this, we could look at police budget, not by patrol cars, be the same amount of money. We could go to the park budget, whack that. I mean, we could pick anywhere we want to. It's just that there's one piece out there that seems like fair game and easy to get to. But I got one other comment, and for the last five or six years, we've told Jack, don't bring us a budget with any, without, with no increase, bring us a budget with no increase. And we've lived off the evaluations that have valuation growth. And that's been all the growth in the city. So all the things we wanted to go do, we've had to put off because we wanted to hold the budget at zero increase. And finally, looking outside the box and looking at some things that we'd like to go do, we've got to pay for it, so.
And Tom brings up a good point again, and just the, the parks budget and some of the other things we do. We spent $10,000 on the 4th of July. Is that discretionary spending? In my eyes, absolutely. Is it irresponsible? Absolutely.
We okayed $2,100 at the last meeting for a fall festival.
For 170 people. So what's irresponsible? I don't know. George?
Yeah, based on what, what Brandy has said, has saying about the solvency at 2020, I voted no against this last time, but based on that information that Brandy's sharing with us, I think in order for us to stay open, the doors stay open, I would have to go along with voting yes for it this time. Some of the concerns I had was the mil levy was the fact that some of my elderly people, they just don't have the $26. It's a lot to them because they live payday, they live month to month on what they have. But when it comes to doing the cost of business, I think we're going to have to do something because I don't want to see the doors shut down here. So I think it'd be prudent to do that at this time based on Brandy's information.
Brandy?
I was just going to answer Ben's question. So the code enforcement is at 209,000 right now with the increase. It makes it 329, so it's about additional 120,000 for this year. But that includes your vehicle and that, so then after the next, next year's, we're looking 80, 85,000. Mr. Loveland paid his taxes. That would be 60,000 coming back to the county, could offset that 80,000. Just saying.
That's true. And this is one of the things, like even you, Ben, at the beginning of the year, you wanted to give away $76,000 to employees and, and bonus money, yet still look at the trend of decreasing general fund balance. I mean, once, it's, it's just crazy to even think of that at one point we want to give away that much money, but now we're not willing to invest into the city. Jim?
Well, you know, my, my opinion hasn't changed. I was in favor of the budget last week. I'm, I'm still in favor of it as it's been proposed and I'm glad Brandy itemized some things here because this is what I was seeing last week, is that you, you have to make this adjustment. You know, there's a lot of good discussion in the details of the adjustment, but, I mean, it, it wasn't hard math to see that the, the general fund was decreasing and there had been a lot of cuts and a lot of holding on to expenses. So I didn't really feel like there was any room in the expenses to cut. So the only place you had left was the income stream and unfortunately, that means the mil levy. So I like, I really appreciate the quantification of it and, you know, just kind of wanted to restate that my, my position stays the same as it, as it was last week and that's in favor of the budget with the, as we had proposed originally.
Okay. Ben?
Sure, I'll respond to those comments there. That was money that was already allocated via budget. It was money that was allocated for specifically employee personnel. And so spending money that's allocated is not taking away from a budget item that's already been, was already given to them. In fact, we're using that $76,000 that was left over to put to general fund this year to make it sustainable. So in that sense, yes, I was, I am in favor of returning that money to a place that has been allocated previously by a budget when it's already been approved by the council. Second off, it wasn't all $76,000. It was a suggestion of a $500,000 rate or a bonus, one-time bonus in addition to the salary increases. And I would also contend that it is investing in our city when we do make sure that our employees are taken care of. So that said, if it's money that's already been allocated in a budget, it wasn't fighting for increased spending. So that's, that's, that is a difference here. Again, I'm not opposed to the mil levy increase. I think it is something that we had to take into consideration simply for the fact that we can't continue on financially where we're at. But if we're going to produce a budget where we're in dire need of, of raising the mil levy increase, it seems, it seems hard to add on. And Tom talks about low-hanging fruit. The reason I think the code enforcement officer is such a low-hanging fruit is because that's a new position or a new line in a sense there on the budget there. It's not previously allocated. Everything else, whether it's police office or vehicles, whether it's events that we do, that's already allocated and been allocated in our budget for years there. So I think that's why you find the code enforcement officer maybe a little bit further down on the tree is because it's something that we're requesting new. Again, I'm not opposed to the mil levy increase. I just, I would like to see it without the code enforcement officer. That puts a little bit more in the general fund reserve there and lets us see what 2019 valuations come in before we get too far down there on that.
Just because something's allocated, when you spend it, it still reduces the general fund. Just because the budget is what gives you, worst-case scenario, if you spent all your money, this is where you'd be. So the allocation only puts it in a category, but if you give it away or spend it, you are reducing the overall fund.
Sure. And let me clarify, what I mean is what was projected there for 2018 ending balance that was already with that accounted for. So yes, it was going to take away from the general fund, but it was something that was already allocated in the budget that was approved.
Right. But then you realize if you don't spend it, your balance is higher, right?
Sure.
Okay. That's the part that I'm confused on in what you're saying because just because it's allocated doesn't mean you have to spend it. Although we have $10,000 in the budget for 4th of July, we could choose not to do that and all that does is increase the carryforward balance.
Sure.
So, so when you say you want to spend it, you're actually decreasing the balance.
But not what was projected at the end of the year based upon, I understand that we're spending the money, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying though is that we're going to approve a budget that has a $616,000 year-end projection. Yeah, it could end up higher. It maybe it will. We'll have to wait and see. We just don't know what 2019 is going to, what 2019 is going to bring, bring out there. But when we have money that's already been allocated for something specific there and then we, and the change was there, it was something that was not unreasonable to request.
But that's something that has budget fiscal responsibility. It doesn't mean with this budget, we go out and spend every penny to get that and then come down to say, well, we hit the 715,000 that we were trying to. The goal all year long would try to be under budget so that you're actually increasing that.
Sure.
So if you, if you say $1,000 to 50 employees, that's $50,000 less in the bank. Okay. All right. George?
There's, there's some language there about dire need and, and things like that. And I was listening to Brandy talk about the code enforcement and talking about a vehicle. And we already have two vehicles assigned to code enforcement and I find it hard to understand why we would need to buy a vehicle, especially for a code enforcement officer. Our police officers don't have their own vehicles and I can't understand why we would, if we were going to be frugal with a taxpayer's money, I don't know why we wouldn't ask those officers, since they don't work the same time, why we wouldn't ask them to share with a vehicle.
And that's, that's a prime example of what we're talking about where that is not within their spending authority. They would have to come to the council and ask. It's only a dollar amount that's in there, so they can't go buy one. They would have to come and say, hey, we need one for this reason. And then you get to decide whether or not, it's only there should that need arise.
Well, Ray, you got to understand, when, when I started here, we, we shared duty on worn-out highway patrol cast-off vehicles. That's what we had to do. And, you know, I don't know in this day and age, we've got two very nice pickups for code enforcement. And if we had three officers, I know it's in the budget for a new vehicle, but I, in my wildest imagination, I can't imagine why we would want to do that.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
Jim?
Conversation's kind of moved past it, but there was a comment earlier about the police, the police vehicles. And if I'm remembering right, we're already driving, we've already made the decision to drive those 20,000 miles longer than we used to.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah. And if you remember this year, one of the things that the chief asked for was we only replaced one vehicle. We're typically replace two. And they used some of those funds for other equipment purchases and did not buy or replace a vehicle. I'm guessing we're going to be in that same position again this year where we would only need to be able to replace one. So, and once again, a budget is what gives So, and once again, a budget is what gives you a guideline by what you can operate for. It doesn't mean that you have to spend all the cash. It's just a guideline. The budget is empowering. It gives us power to do what we need to do. But still, and I think, I don't remember, John said it, but somebody said at one point that, or maybe it was Tom, the fiscal responsibility is throughout the year, not specifically the budget. We want to be reasonable with our budget. We don't want to overstate it dramatically. But whenever we go through the audits, you remember, we get audited, do we do everything we need to do under the budget?
Every night is budget night, not just when we're doing the budget.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, and I know George, who made the comment last week, spend, 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 spend. It's all we do. It's not all we do.
No, we rob the MTB money though. We do that.
Actually, we've been replenishing it. City Hall, we put money back into it. We sold a cell phone tower. We put money back into it.
Is it back where it was?
It's not coming. Danielle, go ahead. Wait, Danielle?
Yeah, we, City Hall proceeds and I'm, oh man, if I can think how much we sold it for. $290, $290,000 was placed into the MTBE about three months ago. And then we had a cell phone tower, which was almost 200,000. So we've put, placed about 580,000 back into MTBE this year.
Yeah. So.
So what's it at now?
1.7 million-ish, somewhere around there.
So we pretty much replaced everything that we took out?
We, we have, we took some, we borrowed some proceeds for engineering fees that are going to be bonded, I believe, next year. So those will be replenished. So other than some approved expenditures this year for a website redesign, a flag and some salt, I believe that's all we've used it for.
So we've been extremely fiscal responsible and I've made sure we went back and put cash back in that. And then I also want to invest back in the community within the park infrastructure because that money was awarded to the city and we should do things for the citizens with that money and not necessarily just keep five million of it in the bank and say, hey, we got it. We should add some amenities that improve the quality of life for our city, makes us a community that's desired to be lived in, which is, I've been very consistent. I want us to clean up. I want us to look sharp. I want people to want to move here. And in the end, that's what will keep taxes low because we will have more residents, we'll have more rooftops, and we won't have to do mill levy increases all the time.
Just out of curiosity, Ray, who's responsible for like the Church of Park City building? Who's responsible? Is it the owners responsible for that and taking care of that strip in the front?
Yes.
Because I went out there, the weeds were probably three foot high and I took it upon myself to go out there and weed whip it because it looked terrible. If you're talking about bringing people in this city, and this is the main drag, 61st Street, when they see that, it's going to discourage them. There's also a tree growing out the side of the building.
And you know, you know who takes care of that? Code enforcement.
Code enforcement takes care of that?
Yes. Code enforcement is the one, they need some extra bodies.
I wouldn't say take care of it. They issue violations.
Right.
They address the violations.
And here's the other thing, if you guys pay attention to the news, City of Wichita had three more murders.
Thirty-six.
Yep. Where do you think that overflow of crime is going to come? Is it going to come to a blighted community or is it coming to a community that everybody's got their stuff well-kept and taken care of? I think we'll see less crime here if we show the investment in that. But that's one thing I brought up the last time. If you see an overflow of crime in our big brother next door, are they going to go to Maze Derby in Andover and do that? Probably not. I can name a few towns that they might go to and I'm not going to do that. Just want to be right to out, out those people. But it's just another reason that we should invest in it. And you know what? Should, should anybody have to get a notice to cut their grass? No. Everybody should be responsible enough. But the reason why we have laws and things in place is because people are not all rational people that you deal with. If they were all rational, we wouldn't need law enforcement. But we do because they have to deal with the people that are not rational.
Tom?
I was just gonna, we were talking about the truck earlier and there's dollars in there. The state says that you have to tell them how you're going to spend the money before you can go spend it. We've got that in there, but what that ends up being is something I probably won't vote for as a compliance truck, because I don't think they need one either. But that's carry forward. If that money does not get spent, it can be reallocated to something else or it can go to carry forward. So it just makes common sense for us to do some of this stuff that, that none of us know we'll vote for. I mean, I don't know how else to say that, Ray. Can you help me out there a little bit?
No.
Okay. Just let it go. Okay.
John?
You know, I just want to say, I put a lot of weight into staff recommendation. Now, now I don't say that, I'm not going to sit up here and say I would not vote for a, a truck. If they came to me and they make a case that they needed a truck because they've been so busy and they're seeing good progress, I would support them in a truck. But I just want to get back to the MTB money. And I feel like, I mean, I was in the council and I think Tom was, and I can't remember if George was or not, but when the MTB money came in, you know, it was a windfall. And, and truthfully, that's what it is for the citizens, is a windfall of money. Doesn't mean we have to go spend it. But I feel like we've been pretty smart with that money. I mean, to have it this much longer, I think is, is a good sign of that. I think one thing that we, a mistake that we did make, and I remember Tom and I at the time, really pushing the support on that was we had a council that was much more conservative and didn't want to raise taxes in a, in a sense like this. And, and truthfully, it takes courage for us to do this, to raise taxes because who wants to run for election and put in the paper, you know, my goal is to raise taxes and make us the highest taxing entity in the county? Nobody does that. But the truth is, looking what's best for our city, we need to do that. And, and by doing this, we don't like it. It's, it's something we do regret, but the times change and prices go up on stuff. But I guess backing up a little bit, years back, we didn't raise taxes for several years and we did take some money out of MTBE, which I thought was a terrible mistake just to get by, to pay the bills every year because we didn't want to raise taxes. And, you know, at the end of that 10 years or whatever it was, I felt like we would get to a point where the mill levy increase would be huge because we kept putting the Band-Aid on it every year and it runs out. And I remember we, and I want to say it was late part of the year, we ended up laying off employees, which is not a very proud moment. I, I just don't want to get there again. And I don't like raising taxes. I understand it's about $2 a month for some folks with a $60,000 house and about $5 for a $150,000 house. That's not good. But at the point, I mean, at part of owning a home, we know things, costs go up. And if you look at like the houses, I'm going to hit the low hanging fruit again, but like code enforcement was dealing with a house that you could see through the roof of it, maybe it was a garage or whatever the structure was, but at some point, those folks were, $2 was quite a bit. And, and I just feel like outreach in the community, like we're talking about churches and things like that, that we need to use those entities to help those folks and get them out. I mean, if they're at a point where $2, $4 or $10 a month, they're, they're past that point. We can't leave them in the house and let it deteriorate and, and then it is an issue for code enforcement. So with that said, I mean, of course, I, I mean, I made the motion on this, but I, I just felt like we needed a starting point so we could get the discussion going. And, and I just want to say too, I know our, our meeting last week, when it ended, we were all probably very frustrated with how it went. And I just want to say, I, I respect everybody's opinion. I'm not upset at someone because they think something's different. I think that's what makes us great is we have eight or nine different opinions that we can build our budget at, at what it needs to be and make our community better. I was just frustrated because I felt like we did budget meetings, budget workshops and everything was fine and we came in here to vote on it and there was a different opinion. So I, I guess we'll see what happens.
Okay. George?
And I understand what John's saying. What stirred it up? What stirred that up, John, between the workshop and the, and the last meeting was the mailing that went out telling people that they was going to get the dollar on their, on their utility bill. And that was like kicking a sleeping dog. And people was talking to me about it and, and you know, I, you know, some council members here represent a very affluent part of town. Some of us don't. I represent the older part of town. I represent a lot of retired seniors, people who've lived here, some of them all their lives or most of them, and they've retired. And some of them lost their spouse and they're living alone and having a hard time making it. That's who I represent. I do not represent a very affluent place where both people work and things are nice. So it's, you know, a mill increase means a lot to them on top of a dollar here and a dollar there. And, you know, sure, I'm sure they can scratch by and get it done, but it hurts them. It's, it might be pocket change to some people, but it's more than pocket change to other people. And, and I would hope that, that some of the council members would understand that some of us deal with a different situation than others. I, I know we've got to do this. There's no doubt in mind. There was no doubt in my mind last week. The only thing I would request is from administration is I would hope that they would give consideration instead of the, the compliance. I would wish that they would think about maybe helping streets more because it's obvious they have a need there. I can see it. I can see the need for compliance, but I can also see the need for streets. And that's just my thoughts on it.
All right. Ben?
I want to say also that I do appreciate John's comments there concerning just, just the, we have a very varying, varying council and differing opinions are often good there with that. And then just want to say I appreciate the comments there. And then George as well. I mean, George and I represent the same ward and we are dealing with those same things. And it is, you know, that's a, it's a tougher one. You have, you know, the water, most of those in our, in our ward are older as well and, and so they don't do the e-bill for the, for their waters, where there's a 75 cents and the dollar, which is all things, I mean, that are needed, that are saving the, the city on the long run. But then at the same point, you know, as the mill levy goes up, their evaluations are also going up. So they're not just getting a 3.44 mill levy increase on what they currently have. As those evaluations go up, they're seeing a little bit more. And so it is, it is one of those tougher decisions there on that. I understand we're going to have to do this there. And in that, again, I will reiterate, I, I think we need to pass it with a 3.44 mill increase levy there. And if, if I am the only one that is really insistent on the code enforcement position, I would vote yes, even without that removed.
Melvin?
Well, I'm not really fond of increasing the mill levy, but I understand it. I really do. I don't really understand the code enforcement when we need employees other places more important. Like George said, the parks, the streets, the different places, places that we've laid off in the past and we haven't replaced. As far, and then we have another 100,000 we want to throw at the parks. I don't really get that. I'd rather throw that at the streets here, kind of fix a problem that we already have versus starting some new ones or starting something new in the parks there. And as far as the events there, the 4th of July, I think it's a big benefit to the city to bring people in. I know you talked about $10,000. Well, I mean, we throw $10,000 at a youth league ballgame too, don't we? Tournaments?
We don't pay, no.
We don't pay that anymore?
Out of the, the general fund?
When there are tournaments out here? Does, oh, CNT does that?
CNT pays them sponsorship money, yes.
So maybe we need to have them go after that. I don't know. But I think it's a benefit to the city or the citizens that have stuff like that. I think it does bring people into the city.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Everybody's had the opportunity to speak their piece.